Good evening, everyone. My name is Lucy Bisson and I'm the Chairperson of the Lewiston Planning Board, and I welcome you this evening to our August 28 meeting. And I would ask Christine Kittredge to call the roll, please.
Roger Dupree.
Here.
Joshua Najin.
Here.
Michael Marcot.
President.
Shanna Cox.
Here.
Lucy Bisson.
Here.
Myself, Christine Kittredge.
Amy Smith.
Here.
Thea Albert.
Here.
And Alex.
Here.
Thank you. And for the record, Shelley Norton, Deputy Director, City Planner, is here. David Hediger, Director of Planning and Code Enforcement. And Linda Tripp, Administrative Assistant. Ms. Norton, are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Any correspondence?
No.
Okay. And the first agenda item is an executive session. We need a motion to go into executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session regarding consultation with the city attorney pursuant to one MRSA subsection 4056E.
Second.
And any discussion? Yes, Roger?
Second.
No, but are there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najin?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
All right. Then we step away and go into the other room for executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, no note taking in there, okay? You can take paper, you can do, but no note taking. Okay? Okay? Thanks. 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 Thanks.[146.11][146.11][S01. Thanks. Thanks. Thanks.[149.11][149.11][S01. Thanks.[150.11][150.11][S01. Thanks.[151.11][151.11][S01. Thanks.[152.11][152.11][S01. Thanks.[153.11][153.11][S01. Thanks.[154.11][154.11][S01. Thanks.[155.11][155.11][S01. Thanks.[156.11][156.11][S01. Thanks.[157.11][157.11][S01. Thanks.[158.11][158.11][S01. Thanks.[159.11][159.11][S01. Thanks.[160.11][160.11][S01. Thanks.[161.11][161.11][S01. Thanks.[162.11][162.11][S01. Thanks.[163.11][163.11][S01. Thanks.[164.11][164.11][S01. Thanks.[165.11][165.11][S01. Thanks.[166.11][166.11][S01. Thanks.[167.11][167.11][S01. Thanks.[168.11][168.11][S01. Thanks.[169.11][169.11][S01. Thanks.[170.11][170.11][S01. Thanks.[171.11][171.11][S01. Thanks.[172.11][172.11][S01. Thanks.[173.11][173.11][S01. Thanks.[174.11][174.11][S01. Thanks.[175.11][175.11][S01. Thanks.[176.11][176.11][S01. Thanks.[177.11][177.11][S01. Thanks.[178.11][178.11][S01. Thanks.[179.11][179.11][S01. Thanks.[180.11][180.11][S01. Thanks.[181.11][181.11][S01. Thanks.[182.11][182.11][S01. Thanks.[183.11][183.11][S01. Thanks.[184.11][184.11][S01. Thanks.[185.11][185.11][S01. Thanks.[186.11][186.11][S01. Thanks.[187.11][187.11][S01. Thanks.[188.11][188.11][S01. Thanks.[189.11][189.11][S01. Thanks.[190.11][190.11][S01. Thanks.[191.11][191.11][S01. Thanks.[192.11][192.11][S01. Thanks.[193.11][193.11][S01. Thanks.[194.11][194.11][S01. Thanks.[195.11][195.11][S01. Thanks.[196.11][196.11][S01. Thanks.[197.11][197.11][S01. Thanks.[198.11][198.11][S01. Thanks.[199.11][199.11][S01. Thanks.[200.11][200.11][S01. Thanks.[201.11][201.11][S01. Thanks.[202.11][202.11][S01. Thanks.[203.11][203.11][S01. Thanks.[204.11][204.11][S01. Thanks.[205.11][205.11][S01. Thanks.[206.11][206.11][S01. Thanks.[207.11][207.11][S01. Thanks.[208.11][208.11][S01. Thanks.[209.11][209.11][S01. Thanks.[210.11][210.11][S01. Thanks.[211.11][211.11][S01. Thanks.[212.11][212.11][S01. Thanks.[213.11][213.11][S01. Thanks.[214.11][214.11][S01. Thanks.[215.11][215.11][S01. Thanks.[216.11][216.11][S01. Thanks.[217.11][217.11][S01. Thanks.[218.11][218.11][S01. Thanks.[219.11][219.11][S01. Thanks.[220.11][220.11][S01. Thanks.[221.11][221.11][S01. Thanks.[222.11][222.11][S01. Thanks.[223.11][223.11][S01. Thanks.[224.11][224.11][S01. Thanks.[225.11][225.11][S01. Thanks.[226.11][226.11][S01. Thanks.[227.11][227.11][S01. Thanks.[228.11][228.11][S01. Thanks.[229.11][229.11][S01. Thanks.[230.11][230.11][S01. Thanks.[231.11][231.11][S01. Thanks.[232.11][232.11][S01. Thanks.[233.11][233.11][S01. Thanks.[234.11][234.11][S01. Thanks.[235.11][235.11][S01. Thanks.[236.11][236.11][S01. Thanks.[237.11][237.11][S01. Thanks.[238.11][238.11][S01. Thanks.[239.11][239.11][S01. Thanks.[240.11][240.11][S01. Thanks.[241.11][241.11][S01. Thanks.[242.11][242.11][S01. Thanks.[243.11][243.11][S01. Thanks.[244.11][244.11][S01. Thanks.[245.11][245.11][S01. Thanks.[246.11][246.11][S01. Thanks.[247.11][247.11][S01. Thanks.[248.11][248.11][S01. Thanks.[249.11][249.11][S01. Thanks.[250.11][250.11][S01. Thanks.[251.11][251.11][S01. Thanks.[252.11][252.11][S01. Thanks.[253.11][253.11][S01. Thanks.[254.11][254.11][S01. Thanks.[255.11][255.11][S01. Thanks.[256.11][256.11][S01. Thanks.[257.11][257.11][S01. Thanks.[258.11][258.11][S01. Thanks.[259.11][259.11][S01. Thanks.[260.11][260.11][S01. Thanks.[261.11][261.11][S01. Thanks.[262.11][262.11][S01. Thanks.[263.11][263.11][S01. Thanks.[264.11][264.11][S01. Thanks.[265.11][265.11][S01. Thanks.[266.11][266.11][S01. Thanks.[267.11][267.11][S01. Thanks.[268.11][268.11][S01. Thanks.[269.11][269.11][S01. Thanks.[270.11][270.11][S01. Thanks.[271.11][271.11][S01. Thanks.[272.11][272.11][S01. Thanks.[273.11][273.11][S01. Thanks.[274.11][274.11][S01. Thanks.[275.11][275.11][S01. Thanks.[276.11][276.11][S01. Thanks.[277.11][277.11][S01. Thanks.[278.11][278.11][S01. Thanks.[279.11][279.11][S01. Thanks.[280.11][280.11][S01. Thanks.[281.11][281.11][S01. Thanks.[282.11][282.11][S01. Thanks.[283.11][283.11][S01. Thanks.[284.11][284.11][S01. Thanks.[285.11][285.11][S01. Thanks.[286.11][286.11][S01. Thanks.[287.11][287.11][S01. Thanks.[288.11][288.11][S01. Thanks.[289.11][289.11][S01. Thanks.[290.11][290.11][S01. Thanks.[291.11][291.11][S01. Thanks.[292.11][292.11][S01. Thanks.[293.11][293.11][S01. Thanks.[294.11][294.11][S01. Thanks.[295.11][295.11][S01. Thanks.[296.11][296.11][S01. Thanks.[297.11][297.11][S01. Thanks.[298.11][298.11][S01. Thanks.[299.11][299.11][S01. Thanks.[300.11][300.11][S01. Thanks.[301.11][301.11][S01. Thanks.[302.11][302.11][S01. Thanks.[303.11][303.11][S01. Thanks.[304.11][304.11][S01. Thanks.[305.11][305.11][S01. Thanks.[306.11][306.11][S01. Thanks.[307.11][307.11][S01. Thanks.[308.11][308.11][S01. Thanks.[309.11][309.11][S01. Thanks.[310.11][310.11][S01. Thanks.[311.11][311.11][S01. Thanks.[312.11][312.11][S01. Thanks.[313.11][313.11][S01. Thanks.[314.11][314.11][S01. Thanks.[315.11][315.11][S01. Thanks.[316.11][316.11][S01. Thanks.[317.11][317.11][S01. Thanks.[318.11][318.11][S01. Thanks.[319.11][319.11][S01. Thanks.[320.11][320.11][S01. Thanks.[321.11][321.11][S01. Thanks.[322.11][322.11][S01. Thanks.[323.11][323.11][S01. Thanks.[324.11][324.11][S01. Thanks.[325.11][325.11][S01. Thanks.[326.11][326.11][S01. Thanks.[327.11][327.11][S01. Thanks.[328.11][328.11][S01. Thanks.[329.11][329.11][S01. Thanks.[330.11][330.11][S01. Thanks.[331.11][331.11][S01. Thanks.[332.11][332.11][S01. Thanks.[333.11][333.11][S01. Thanks.[334.11][334.11][S01. Thanks.[335.11][335.11][S01. Thanks.[336.11][336.11][S01. Thanks.[337.11][337.11][S01. Thanks.[338.11][338.11][S01. Thanks.[339.11][339.11][S01. Thanks.[340.11][340.11][S01. Thanks.[341.11][341.11][S01. Thanks.[342.11][342.11][S01. Thanks.[343.11][343.11][S01. Thanks.[344.11][344.11][S01. Thanks.[345.11][345.11][S01. Thanks.[346.11][346.11][S01. Thanks.[347.11][347.11][S01. Thanks.[348.11][348.11][S01. Thanks.[349.11][349.11][S01. Thanks.[350.11][350.11][S01. Thanks.[351.11][351.11][S01. Thanks.[352.11][352.11][S01. Thanks.[353.11][353.11][S01. Thanks.[354.11][354.11][S01. Thanks.[355.11][355.11][S01. Thanks.[356.11][356.11][S01. Thanks.[357.11][357.11][S01. Thanks.[358.11][358.11][S01. Thanks.[359.11][359.11][S01. Thanks.[360.11][360.11][S01. Thanks.[361.11][361.11][S01. Thanks.[362.11][362.11][S01. Thanks.[363.11][363.11][S01. Thanks.[364.11][364.11][S01. Thanks.[365.11][365.11][S01. Thanks.[366.11][366.11][S01. Thanks.[367.11][367.11][S01. Thanks.[368.11][368.11][S01. Thanks.[369.11][369.11][S01. Thanks.[370.11][370.11][S01. Thanks.[371.11][371.11][S01. Thanks.[372.11][372.11][S01. Thanks.[373.11][373.11][S01. Thanks.[374.11][374.11][S01. Thanks.[375.11][375.11][S01. Thanks.[376.11][376.11][S01. Thanks.[377.11][377.11][S01. Thanks.[378.11][378.11][S01. Thanks.[379.11][379.11][S01. Thanks.[380.11][380.11][S01. Thanks.[381.11][381.11][S01. Thanks.[382.11][382.11][S01. Thanks.[383.11][383.11][S01. Thanks.[384.11][384.11][S01. Thanks.[385.11][385.11][S01. Thanks.[386.11][386.11][S01. Thanks.[387.11][387.11][S01. Thanks.[388.11][388.11][S01. Thanks.[389.11][389.11][S01. Thanks.[390.11][390.11][S01. Thanks.[391.11][391.11][S01. Thanks.[392.11][392.11][S01. Thanks.[393.11][393.11][S01. Thanks.[394.11][394.11][S01. Thanks.[395.11][395.11][S01. Thanks.[396.11][396.11][S01. Thanks.[397.11][397.11][S01. Thanks.[398.11][398.11][S01. Thanks.[399.11][399.11][S01. Thanks.[400.11][400.11][S01. Thanks.[401.11][401.11][S01. Thanks.[402.11][402.11][S01. Thanks.[403.11][403.11][S01. Thanks.[404.11][404.11][S01. Thanks.[405.11][405.11][S01. Thanks.[406.11][406.11][S01. Thanks.[407.11][407.11][S01. Thanks.[408.11][408.11][S01. Thanks.[409.11][409.11][S01. Thanks.[410.11][410.11][S01. Thanks.[411.11][411.11][S01. Thanks.[412.11][412.11][S01. Thanks.[413.11][413.11][S01. Thanks.[414.11][414.11][S01. Thanks.[415.11][415.11][S01. Thanks.[416.11][416.11][S01. Thanks.[417.11][417.11][S01. Thanks.[418.11][418.11][S01. Thanks.[419.11][419.11][S01. Thanks.[420.11][420.11][S01. Thanks.[421.11][421.11][S01. Thanks.[422.11][422.11][S01. Thanks.[423.11][423.11][S01. Thanks.[424.11][424.11][S01. Thanks.[425.11][425.11][S01. Thanks.[426.11][426.11][S01. Thanks.[427.11][427.11][S01. Thanks.[428.11][428.11][S01. Thanks.[429.11][429.11][S01. Thanks.[430.11][430.11][S01. Thanks.[431.11][431.11][S01. Thanks.[432.11][432.11][S01. Thanks.[433.11][433.11][S01. Thanks.[434.11][434.11][S01. Thanks.[435.11][435.11][S01. Thanks.[436.11][436.11][S01. Thanks.[437.11][437.11][S01. Thanks.[438.11][438.11][S01. Thanks.[439.11][439.11][S01. Thanks.[440.11][440.11][S01. Thanks.[441.11][441.11][S01. Thanks.[442.11][442.11][S01. Thanks.[443.11][443.11][S01. Thanks.[444.11][444.11][S01. Thanks.[445.11][445.11][S01. Thanks.[446.11][446.11][S01. Thanks.[447.11][447.11][S01. Thanks.[448.11][448.11][S01. Thanks.[449.11][449.11][S01. Thanks.[450.11][450.11][S01. Thanks.[451.11][451.11][S01. Thanks.[452.11][452.11][S01. Thanks.[453.11][453.11][S01. Thanks.[454.11][454.11][S01. Thanks.[455.11][455.11][S01. Thanks.[456.11][456.11][S01. Thanks.[457.11][457.11][S01. Thanks.[458.11][458.11][S01. Thanks.[459.11][459.11][S01. Thanks.[460.11][460.11][S01. Thanks.[461.11][461.11][S01. Thanks.[462.11][462.11][S01. Thanks.[463.11][463.11][S01. Thanks.[464.11][464.11][S01. Thanks.[465.11][465.11][S01. Thanks.[466.11][466.11][S01. Thanks.[467.11][467.11][S01. Thanks.[468.11][468.11][S01. Thanks.[469.11][469.11][S01. Thanks.[470.11][470.11][S01. Thanks.[471.11][471.11][S01. Thanks.[472.11][472.11][S01. Thanks.[473.11][473.11][S01. Thanks.[474.11][474.11][S01. Thanks.[475.11][475.11][S01. Thanks.[476.11][476.11][S01. Thanks.[477.11][477.11][S01. Thanks.[478.11][478.11][S01. Thanks.[479.11][479.11][S01. Thanks.[480.11][480.11][S01. Thanks.[481.11][481.11][S01. Thanks.[482.11][482.11][S01. Thanks.[483.11][483.11][S01. Thanks.[484.11][484.11][S01. Thanks.[485.11][485.11][S01. Thanks.[486.11][486.11][S01. Thanks.[487.11][487.11][S01. Thanks.[488.11][488.11][S01. Thanks.[489.11][489.11][S01. Thanks.[490.11][490.11][S01. Thanks.[491.11][491.11][S01. Thanks.[492.11][492.11][S01. Thanks.[493.11][493.11][S01. Thanks.[494.11][494.11][S01. Thanks.[495.11][495.11][S01. Thanks.[496.11][496.11][S01. Thanks.[497.11][497.11][S01. Thanks.[498.11][498.11][S01. Thanks.[499.11][499.11][S01. Thanks.[500.11][500.11][S01. Thanks.[501.11][501.11][S01. Thanks.[502.11][502.11][S01. Thanks.[503.11][503.11][S01. Thanks.[504.11][504.11][S01. Thanks.[505.11][505.11][S01. Thanks.[506.11][506.11][S01. Thanks.[507.11][507.11][S01. Thanks.[508.11][508.11][S01. Thanks.[509.11][509.11][S01. Thanks.[510.11][510.11][S01. Thanks.[511.11][511.11][S01. Thanks.[512.11][512.11][S01. Thanks.[513.11][513.11][S01. Thanks.[514.11][514.11][S01. Thanks.[515.11][515.11][S01. Thanks.[516.11][516.11][S01. Thanks.[517.11][517.11][S01. Thanks.[518.11][518.11][S01. Thanks.[519.11][519.11][S01. Thanks.[520.11][520.11][S01. Thanks.[521.11][521.11][S01. Thanks.[522.11][522.11][S01. Thanks.[523.11][523.11][S01. Thanks.[524.11][524.11][S01. Thanks.[525.11][525.11][S01. Thanks.[526.11][526.11][S01. Thanks.[527.11][527.11][S01. Thanks.[528.11][528.11][S01. Thanks.[529.11][529.11][S01. Thanks.[530.11][530.11][S01. Thanks.[531.11][531.11][S01. Thanks.[532.11][532.11][S01. Thanks.[533.11][533.11][S01. Thanks.[534.11][534.11][S01. Thanks.[535.11][535.11][S01. Thanks.[536.11][536.11][S01. Thanks.[537.11][537.11][S01. Thanks.[538.11][538.11][S01. Thanks.[539.11][539.11][S01. Thanks.[540.11][540.11][S01. Thanks.[541.11][541.11][S01. Thanks.[542.11][542.11][S01. Thanks.[543.11][543.11][S01. Thanks.[544.11][544.11][S01. Thanks.[545.11][545.11][S01. Thanks.[546.11][546.11][S01. Thanks.[547.11][547.11][S01. Thanks.[548.11][548.11][S01. Thanks.[549.11][549.11][S01. Thanks.[550.11][550.11][S01. Thanks.[551.11][551.11][S01. Thanks.[552.11][552.11][S01. Thanks.[553.11][553.11][S01. Thanks.[554.11][554.11][S01. Thanks.[555.11][555.11][S01. Thanks.[556.11][556.11][S01. Thanks.[557.11][557.11][S01. Thanks.[558.11][558.11][S01. Thanks.[559.11][559.11][S01. Thanks.[560.11][560.11][S01. Thanks.[561.11][561.11][S01. Thanks.[562.11][562.11][S01. Thanks.[563.11][563.11][S01. Thanks.[564.11][564.11][S01. Thanks.[565.11][565.11][S01. Thanks.[566.11][566.11][S01. Thanks.[567.11][567.11][S01. Thanks.[568.11][568.11][S01. Thanks.[569.11][569.11][S01. Thanks.[570.11][570.11][S01. Thanks.[571.11][571.11][S01. Thanks.[572.11][572.11][S01. Thanks.[573.11][573.11][S01. Thanks.[574.11][574.11][S01. Thanks.[575.11][575.11][S01. Thanks.[576.11][576.11][S01. Thanks.[577.11][577.11][S01. Thanks.[578.11][578.11][S01. Thanks.[579.11][579.11][S01. Thanks.[580.11][580.11][S01. Thanks.[581.11][581.11][S01. Thanks.[582.11][582.11][S01. Thanks.[583.11][583.11][S01. Thanks.[584.11][584.11][S01. Thanks.[585.11][585.11][S01. Thanks.[586.11][586.11][S01. Thanks.[587.11][587.11][S01. Thanks.[588.11][588.11][S01. Thanks.[589.11][589.11][S01. Thanks.[590.11][590.11][S01. Thanks.[591.11][591.11][S01. Thanks.[592.11][592.11][S01. Thanks.[593.11][593.11][S01. Thanks.[594.11][594.11][S01. Thanks.[595.11][595.11][S01. Thanks.[596.11][596.11][S01. Thanks.[597.11][597.11][S01. Thanks.[598.11][598.11][S01. Thanks.[599.11][599.11][S01. Thanks.[600.11][600.11][S01. Thanks.[601.11][601.11][S01. Thanks.[602.11][602.11][S01. Thanks.[603.11][603.11][S01. Thanks.[604.11][604.11][S01. Thanks.[605.11][605.11][S01. Thanks.[606.11][606.11][S01. Thanks.[607.11][607.11][S01. Thanks.[608.11][608.11][S01. Thanks.[609.11][609.11][S01. Thanks.[610.11][610.11][S01. Thanks.[611.11][611.11][S01. Thanks.[612.11][612.11][S01. Thanks.[613.11][613.11][S01. Thanks.[614.11][614.11][S01. Thanks.[615.11][615.11][S01. Thanks.[616.11][616.11][S01. Thanks.[617.11][617.11][S01. Thanks.[618.11][618.11][S01. Thanks.[619.11][619.11][S01. Thanks.[620.11][620.11][S01. Thanks.[621.11][621.11][S01. Thanks.[622.11][622.11][S01. Thanks.[623.11][623.11][S01. Thanks.[624.11][624.11][S01. Thanks.[625.11][625.11][S01. Thanks.[626.11][626.11][S01. Thanks.[627.11][627.11][S01. Thanks.[628.11][628.11][S01. Thanks.[629.11][629.11][S01. Thanks.[630.11][630.11][S01. Thanks.[631.11][631.11][S01. Thanks.[632.11][632.11][S01. Thanks.[633.11][633.11][S01. Thanks.[634.11][634.11][S01. Thanks.[635.11][635.11][S01. Thanks.[636.11][636.11][S01. Thanks.[637.11][637.11][S01. Thanks.[638.11][638.11][S01. Thanks.[639.11][639.11][S01. Thanks.[640.11][640.11][S01. Thanks.[641.11][641.11][S01. Thanks.[642.11][642.11][S01. Thanks.[643.11][643.11][S01. Thanks.[644.11][644.11][S01. Thanks.[645.11][645.11][S01. Thanks.[646.11][646.11][S01. Thanks.[647.11][647.11][S01. Thanks.[648.11][648.11][S01. Thanks.[649.11][649.11][S01. Thanks.[650.11][650.11][S01. Thanks.[651.11][651.11][S01. Thanks.[652.11][652.11][S01. Thanks.[653.11][653.11][S01. Thanks.[654.11][654.11][S01. Thanks.[655.11][655.11][S01. Thanks.[656.11][656.11][S01. Thanks.[657.11][657.11][S01. Thanks.[658.11][658.11][S01. Thanks.[659.11][659.11][S01. Thanks.[660.11][660.11][S01. Thanks.[661.11][661.11][S01. Thanks.[662.11][662.11][S01. Thanks.[663.11][663.11][S01. Thanks.[664.11][664.11][S01. Thanks.[665.11][665.11][S01. Thanks.[666.11][666.11][S01. Thanks.[667.11][667.11][S01. Thanks.[668.11][668.11][S01. Thanks.[669.11][669.11][S01. Thanks.[670.11][670.11][S01. Thanks.[671.11][671.11][S01. Thanks.[672.11][672.11][S01. Thanks.[673.11][673.11][S01. Thanks.[674.11][674.11][S01. Thanks.[675.11][675.11][S01. Thanks.[676.11][676.11][S01. Thanks.[677.11][677.11][S01. Thanks.[678.11][678.11][S01. Thanks.[679.11][679.11][S01. Thanks.[680.11][680.11][S01. Thanks.[681.11][681.11][S01. Thanks.[682.11][682.11][S01. Thanks.[683.11][683.11][S01. Thanks.[684.11][684.11][S01. Thanks.[685.11][685.11][S01. Thanks.[686.11][686.11][S01. Thanks.[687.11][687.11][S01. Thanks.[688.11][688.11][S01. Thanks.[689.11][689.11][S01. Thanks.[690.11][690.11][S01. Thanks.[691.11][691.11][S01. Thanks.[692.11][692.11][S01. Thanks.[693.11][693.11][S01. Thanks.[694.11][694.11][S01. Thanks.[695.11][695.11][S01. Thanks.[696.11][696.11][S01. Thanks.[697.11][697.11][S01. Thanks.[698.11][698.11][S01. Thanks.[699.11][699.11][S01. Thanks.[700.11][700.11][S01. Thanks.[701.11][701.11][S01. Thanks.[702.11][702.11][S01. Thanks.[703.11][703.11][S01. Thanks.[704.11][704.11][S01. Thanks.[705.11][705.11][S01. Thanks.[706.11][706.11][S01. Thanks.[707.11][707.11][S01. Thanks.[708.11][708.11][S01. Thanks.[709.11][709.11][S01. Thanks.[710.11][710.11][S01. Thanks.[711.11][711.11][S01. Thanks.[712.11][712.11][S01. Thanks.[713.11][713.11][S01. Thanks.[714.11][714.11][S01. Thanks.[715.11][715.11][S01. Thanks.[716.11][716.11][S01. Thanks.[717.11][717.11][S01. Thanks.[718.11][718.11][S01. Thanks.[719.11][719.11][S01. Thanks.[720.11][720.11][S01. Thanks.[721.11][721.11][S01. Thanks.[722.11][722.11][S01. Thanks.[723.11][723.11][S01. Thanks.[724.11][724.11][S01. Thanks.[725.11][725.11][S01. Thanks.[726.11][726.11][S01. Thanks.[727.11][727.11][S01. Thanks.[728.11][728.11][S01. Thanks.[729.11][729.11][S01. Thanks.[730.11][730.11][S01. Thanks.[731.11][731.11][S01. Thanks.[732.11][732.11][S01. Thanks.[733.11][733.11][S01. Thanks.[734.11][734.11][S01. Thanks.[735.11][735.11][S01. Thanks.[736.11][736.11][S01. Thanks.[737.11][737.11][S01. Thanks.[738.11][738.11][S01. Thanks.[739.11][739.11][S01. Thanks.[740.11][740.11][S01. Thanks.[741.11][741.11][S01. Thanks.[742.11][742.11][S01. Thanks.[743.11][743.11][S01. Thanks.[744.11][744.11][S01. Thanks.[745.11][745.11][S01. Thanks.[746.11][746.11][S01. Thanks.[747.11][747.11][S01. Thanks.[748.11][748.11][S01. Thanks.[749.11][749.11][S01. Thanks.[750.11][750.11][S01. Thanks.[751.11][751.11][S01. Thanks.[752.11][752.11][S01. Thanks.[753.11][753.11][S01. Thanks.[754.11][754.11][S01. Thanks.[755.11][755.11][S01. Thanks.[756.11][756.11][S01. Thanks.[757.11][757.11][S01. Thanks.[758.11][758.11][S01. Thanks.[759.11][759.11][S01. Thanks.[760.11][760.11][S01. Thanks.[761.11][761.11][S01. Thanks.[762.11][762.11][S01. Thanks.[763.11][763.11][S01. Thanks.[764.11][764.11][S01. Thanks.[765.11][765.11][S01. Thanks.[766.11][766.11][S01. Thanks.[767.11][767.11][S01. Thanks.[768.11][768.11][S01. Thanks.[769.11][769.11][S01. Thanks.[770.11][770.11][S01. Thanks.[771.11][771.11][S01. Thanks.[772.11][772.11][S01. Thanks.[773.11][773.11][S01. Thanks.[774.11][774.11][S01. Thanks.[775.11][775.11][S01. Thanks.[776.11][776.11][S01. Thanks.[777.11][777.11][S01. Thanks.[778.11][778.11][S01. Thanks.[779.11][779.11][S01. Thanks.[780.11][780.11][S01. Thanks.[781.11][781.11][S01. Thanks.[782.11][782.11][S01. Thanks.[783.11][783.11][S01. Thanks.[784.11][784.11][S01. Thanks.[785.11][785.11][S01. Thanks.[786.11][786.11][S01. Thanks.[787.11][787.11][S01. Thanks.[788.11][788.11][S01. Thanks.[789.11][789.11][S01. Thanks.[790.11][790.11][S01. Thanks.[791.11][791.11][S01. Thanks.[792.11][792.11][S01. Thanks.[793.11][793.11][S01. Thanks.[794.11][794.11][S01. Thanks.[795.11][795.11][S01. Thanks.[796.11][796.11][S01. Thanks.[797.11][797.11][S01. Thanks.[798.11][798.11][S01. Thanks.[799.11][799.11][S01. Thanks.[800.11][800.11][S01. Thanks.[801.11][801.11][S01. Thanks.[802.11][802.11][S01. Thanks.[803.11][803.11][S01. Thanks.[804.11][804.11][S01. Thanks.[805.11][805.11][S01. Thanks.[806.11][806.11][S01. Thanks.[807.11][807.11][S01. Thanks.[808.11][808.11][S01. Thanks.[809.11][809.11][S01. Thanks.[810.11][810.11][S01. Thanks.[811.11][811.11][S01. Thanks.[812.11][812.11][S01. Thanks.[813.11][813.11][S01. Thanks.[814.11][814.11][S01. Thanks.[815.11][815.11][S01. Thanks.[816.11][816.11][S01. Thanks.[817.11][817.11][S01. Thanks.[818.11][818.11][S01. Thanks.[819.11][819.11][S01. Thanks.[820.11][820.11][S01. Thanks.[821.11][821.11][S01. Thanks.[822.11][822.11][S01. Thanks.[823.11][823.11][S01. Thanks.[824.11][824.11][S01. Thanks.[825.11][825.11][S01. Thanks.[826.11][826.11][S01. Thanks.[827.11][827.11][S01. Thanks.[828.11][828.11][S01. Thanks.[829.11][829.11][S01. Thanks.[830.11][830.11][S01. Thanks.[831.11][831.11][S01. Thanks.[832.11][832.11][S01. Thanks.[833.11][833.11][S01. Thanks.[834.11][834.11][S01. Thanks.[835.11][835.11][S01. Thanks.[836.11][836.11][S01. Thanks.[837.11][837.11][S01. Thanks.[838.11][838.11][S01. Thanks.[839.11][839.11][S01. Thanks.[840.11][840.11][S01. Thanks.[841.11][841.11][S01. Thanks.[842.11][842.11][S01. Thanks.[843.11][843.11][S01. Thanks.[844.11][844.11][S01. Thanks.[845.11][845.11][S01. Thanks.[846.11][846.11][S01. Thanks.[847.11][847.11][S01. Thanks.[848.11][848.11][S01. Thanks.[849.11][849.11][S01. Thanks.[850.11][850.11][S01. Thanks.[851.11][851.11][S01. Thanks.[852.11][852.11][S01. Thanks.[853.11][853.11][S01. Thanks.[854.11][854.11][S01. Thanks.[855.11][855.11][S01. Thanks.[856.11][856.11][S01. Thanks.[857.11][857.11][S01. Thanks.[858.11][858.11][S01. Thanks.[859.11][859.11][S01. Thanks.[860.11]
Okay, we're back from executive session and we are now going to go to public hearings. Our first public hearing is the Planning Board sending a recommendation to the City Council for amendment to the Zoning and Land Use Code Article II definitions pertaining to homeless shelters and transitional housing. Ms. Norton, would you like to read your comments, please?
Sure. So, at its August fifteenth meeting, the City Council held a public hearing of first passage, subject to your approval of changes to the zoning and land use code Article Two, Section Two definitions. What this does is it changes the shelter definition to include transitional housing and then also includes a definition for transitional housing that is from the federal Code of Regulations. So, what I'll point out is that currently transitional housing isn't a use in our list of uses on our charts or in our definitions. What typically happens when somebody asks to do something that we don't have on our list, if it neatly fits within something else, like, for example, retail, well, there's a lot of specific kinds of retail, we might just lump that under retail. For transitional housing, we might classify it as multifamily, or single-family, or a lodging house, depends on what the actual other details about the use, less about who is living there and more about, you know, the facility itself. So, that's currently how staff would treat that. So, the city's Housing Committee provided a memo to the council, which we've also provided to you, in that they had a couple of concerns about how broadly applying that shelter, both definition and the licensing and the overlay, might limit the amount of transitional housing opportunities in the city, you know. The overlay, I mean, that's kind of obvious, there's also distances from schools and other facilities that could be a limitation. In addition, there's a maximum amount of beds for shelters in the city, so that would potentially limit how many transitional units could be developed in the future in the city. So, they had other concerns as well, but those are, I think, some of the ones to kind of highlight. So, just a little bit of the background, staff was given direction from council to look at South Portland's homeless shelter language. South Portland has language where they've included transitional housing as part of their shelter definition. One of the things that was not included in this work, that is something that South Portland also has, is a prohibition for hotels, motels, and inns being used as a shelter. So, we included South Portland's language here under the background, it says, "No person shall operate the same facility as both a lodging establishment and a medium-scale or large-scale shelter," which, with their definitions, I believe is nine or more, like, I think nine to fifty is medium and fifty to a hundred is large. And so, no person shall seek or obtain land use approvals for the same facility as both a lodging establishment, medium-scale, or large-scale shelter. So, you couldn't have, let's say, a hotel that is allocating some of its rooms as a transitional housing facility. You also couldn't potentially have an existing hotel convert all to transitional, is kind of how staff would be interpreting how South Portland language would be. So, that is not included, just so you're aware, in the write-up that's provided. And one other thing that's specifically called out is not included is recovery houses. If you had a chance to watch the council meeting, or happens to be in attendance, you heard that there was public input on that, and the council made the decision that night on August fifteenth to specifically call out that recovery houses would not be part of the shelter definition. So, that change is shown in the language that you've been provided. In addition, because of that, recovery house has also been defined, which is kind of, in this area, it's listed, really, in the definition, it would be recovery house means a recovery residence as a term is defined, and then it has the state statute. When you go down to the reason for the proposed amendment, the actual language is provided there from state statute. So, I guess that's the main thing staff wanted to point out, is if you move this forward and if the council does adopt it, there may be a need to revisit either the overlay, but certainly the licensing for shelters, so that there might be a change in the number, so that there wouldn't be a cap on transitional housing, for example, or just look at those other potential unintended consequences of adding transitional housing to the shelter definition. We attach a couple of attachments, the Housing Committee memo, as well as a letter that was provided to the council during their meeting from Mean Association of Recovery Residences, and if the council, if the board wants to take action tonight, there is a motion that's been drafted that you could move forward. I will point out that we are planning on a joint meeting with the council on September twelfth, and at this point in time, one of the items on the agenda is revisiting the shelter overlay area, which is something that you and the council have talked about for a number of months. And then, there's also discussion about lodging houses as well. So, at this point in time, we don't have discussion about transitional houses on that agenda, we could add it. Certainly, as you're looking at the shelter overlay, if the intent is to have transitional housing part of that, then that would be good for everybody to know as you're revisiting that overlay. That's all I have.
Yeah, but Shelley, by combining both the these are transitional with the homeless, wouldn't that basically confine the transition to one area?
Yes, it would. It would confine it.
What about those transition homes now that are outside the area? How are they affected?
Are they grandfathered?
Yeah, I would argue that they would be grandfathered or become legally non-conforming. What we all need to remember is, this is just the definition section, where the, we allow shelters in a number of zoning districts, and then, specific to those zoning districts, the overlay, if folks remember where the overlay was, and we can pull it up if we need to this evening. And that's kind of where the Planning Board's role stops, then the rest of it comes under the business licensing section, where those are the performance standards that Shelley was talking about, setbacks from schools, number of beds, things like that. So, I guess to your point, Roger, they may be non-conforming from a zoning perspective, because we're going to call them shelters now, and they may also be an issue from a licensing perspective, because maybe they're too close to a school, or childcare, or, you know, whatever the other performance standards are that we have in place. We haven't really looked at that, but if we were asked, we would probably say, hey, they're legally non-conforming, they've been there a month, they've been there ten years, so be it. And that's kind of what the language does now for the shelters, it allows existing shelters to be non-conforming, that fall outside, but there's specific provisions in there, too, where even some of the non-conforming shelters, after five years, have to start bringing things into compliance as well. Obviously, I don't think that's been contemplated at this point. You folks wouldn't necessarily be looking at that, but that's a concern that we would raise to the council, saying, great, if you go forward with this, then we need to think about how transitional it was going to be impacted by the licensing process, and council, what do you want to do about that?
But, on the reverse side, when the shelter, or the homeless shelter people say, well, jeez, you got a transition out here, why can't we move our homeless shelter in that area, which is beyond the overlay?
They may make that argument.
By combining them, you're expanding this to an entire area, instead of just to a confined area.
Someone may make, may make that argument.
Okay. Michael?
A suggestion that there's transitional housing out there, didn't you just say in the memo that we don't have a definition, per se, and that, when staff identifies the type of operation, and it might be classified as multifamily residential or lodging, that that's where it goes? So, there really isn't anything called transitional in Lewiston, because there's no definition as yet?
That's...
So, there would be no impact on anything pre-existing, since there is nothing pre-existing as traditional, transitional, I mean?
Until we define something, and then we may end up having, I mean, I, you're not wrong, Mike, I mean, that's part of the challenge, is like, do we have transitional housing and, or is it just multifamily? New Beginnings, New Beginnings operates transitional housing, they've, you know, they're on the record saying they have transitional housing.
But, we aren't classifying it as such.
Correct. So, with this change, great, they would potentially now be classified as transitional housing, also known as a shelter, subject to whatever those licensing rules are.
To be clear about New Beginnings, when you say that they've identified themselves as transitional housing, is it by the definition that we're given here, or is that them self-defining?
They're aware of this definition, but I'm not sure, Alex, if, they've seen this language, but they've also said that this would impact a number of their facilities.
Alex?
From a code and planning perspective, did staff get any input from South Portland when you went to get the language, like, in terms of any challenge? Like, I guess what I wonder about is, how long has South Portland had this language for? I know there's been, you know, a lot of sort of churn in that community around this particular issue, and if they've had any challenges with interpretation, or enforcement, or anything like that, like, are there, is there any deficiency in this language that we've been provided with? And then, I also wonder about, you know, looking at the definition that's given here for transitional housing, you know, where the program participants have signed a lease or occupancy agreement to facilitate movement to permanent housing, just paraphrasing it, you know, how does that work in a voucher situation, where the program is giving a housing voucher for a limited period of time, or something like that? You know, we start to get into these gray areas. So, I'd be really curious, looking at South Portland, as, you know, someone who's been at least implementing this for a little bit, what have their challenges been?
Yeah, I don't believe staff has talked with them at all. You have a secret?
Excuse me, what I can tell you is that their ordinance was, I believe, effective February twenty-first.
Of this year.
Of this year?
Yeah.
Okay, so, they probably don't have much, much information. Okay, does, Shanna?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, absolutely.
Shelley, on the first page of the memo that you offered, under background, the opening sentence refers to actions that the staff took under direction from council, the second sentence reads, "This involved incorporating transitional housing as part of a shelter." Does that sentence reference what South Portland did, or what staff did to meet the council's request?
Yeah, both. So, we were mirroring how South Portland had it at council's request.
Have we been provided, and I missed it, or do you have available to you the South Portland definition that includes and does, as you've named, incorporated transitional housing as part of a shelter?
Yeah, we do have that, and they use the federal definition, but they don't? Oh, okay. All right, hang on just a second. Do they not define transitional housing?
No.
Okay, they don't define transitional housing, they just say, "Shelter shall mean a facility all or a part of which is used or designated to be used to provide temporary or transitional housing for persons experiencing homelessness, or for specific populations of persons experiencing homelessness without regard to the person seeking shelter's ability to pay for their eligibility, or reimbursement, or actual reimbursement from any third-party source, including local municipal state or federal funding sources." Shelter does not include temporary shelter facilities associated with disaster relief or emergency response, or a lodging establishment.
Would you repeat that last sentence, please?
Yeah, and I paraphrase, so, "Shelter does not include a lodging establishment," but it also said, "Shelter does not include temporary shelter facilities associated with disaster relief or emergency response."
Oh, okay.
And our ordinance is the same with respect to that, if there was a fire, or natural disaster, or something like that, we're using the armory, we're using the school.
Right, we could respond.
Right.
So, just to clarify what I think I understood you saying, the definition that we've been provided, under Article Two definitions, in our packet, that definition does not mirror South Portland's, insofar as it does include language specific to transitional housing, which has not been incorporated by South Portland.
That's correct.
Accurate?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Josh?
I've just got a few questions about, so, right now, if you're staying in temporary housing, that would be like inns, boarding houses, other lodgings, such as that, regardless of who's paying for your stay, that isn't actually reported to the city until ninety-seven days, is not required to be reported to the city until ninety-seven days, is that correct? Including cases where, let's say, Oxford County is using GA funds, like, one of the towns, in order to put somebody up in a boarding house or a hotel? The reason why I'm asking this, we had, in the testimony at City Council, somebody had mentioned they'd been staying in a hotel for four and a half years on funding that was provided by General Assistance, I believe. And so, I guess the question is, if we don't regulate under ninety-seven days for boarding houses, lodging houses, and inns, or hotels, would we start regulating transitionalizing from a one-month lease contract? That's contradictory, correct? Like, there's a window in there that's odd, or no?
Sorry, Josh, I'm not sure I quite follow you, I'm not familiar with the ninety-seven days.
I hadn't seen that either, in the materials. Yeah, it's not in our material.
It's not in the materials, but it's previous to another conversation that we've had in this room, about when a hotel or a boarding house has to report to the city.
Gotcha. Yeah, it's a hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days.
Yeah, so, a hundred and eighty days, so, yes, and that's actually part of the discussion that we will be having on the joint meeting on the twelfth, as far as what to do with lodging establishments, so, I apologize if this is long-winded. If you're a motel, hotel, inn, and people are staying more than a hundred and eighty days, the state is not interested in licensing those facilities anymore, they are interested in your typical hospitality-type establishments. We certainly have hotel, motels, and inns in Lewiston where people are staying more than a hundred and eighty days, four years, whatever the case may be. I don't know what type of assistance they're getting, they may be paying out of their own pocket, they may be receiving state assistance, I can't speak to that. So, that's, I'm not sure if that is that...
Well, I guess the question would be, would that, because there's no lease, that wouldn't be transitional housing, even though it's obviously not?
Correct.
Housing?
That's right, yeah. I mean, one of the arguments, the discussion we've had upstairs, or, I've said it anyway, is, you know, the potential for homeless people to be staying in a hotel at any point. You could be homeless for a week, you could be homeless for, you know, three months, and then you move on. We don't know if they're paying by the day, or by the week, or whatever, like any one of us would be if we're staying at a hotel, we wouldn't know any different. They very well may be homeless, and then they're not, they're back in a house, or an apartment, or something like that.
Okay, and right now, anything under eight and under in the communal living arrangements is regulated by state law, anything nine and above, we have regulations for, is that correct, or we do not?
What do you, eight, eight people living together, or eight or nine? Okay.
And "we" is the city of Lewiston's ordering and code, right? Not the planning board specifically?
Right, there's the community living arrangement, which is eight or fewer, that happens in a dwelling unit, that happens as a matter of right, then anything more than that, if it meets the definition of a group home, would be a group home, and that's licensed by the state.
Okay.
As we know from the recovery residence language, you know, recovery residences aren't necessarily licensed by the state, they may be certified, but they're not licensed by the state.
That, I just, let me just ask one more, so, from, and I'm just trying to check, to get a full concept, like, in my head here, in single-family housing, do we have occupancy requirements based on bedrooms, like, or occupancy caps at all? So, like, let's say it's a two-bedroom house, how many people can live in a two-bedroom house?
So, dwelling unit has a limitation under definition, which is a family plus three unrelated people. So if I'm single, and everybody else there is single, then it's four unrelated people. If I'm there with number of family members that meet our definition of a family, so grandparents, children, whatever, it could be two of us, it could be twenty of us, plus three unrelated people.
The fire code will kick in at some point, and they may say, like, there's twenty family members, but you can't have twenty family members in this bedroom. You're gonna, you gotta use other rooms in the venue. But I'm not sure what the square footage is.
There is limitations for specific funding programs for the number of occupancies per bedroom, and what qualifies a bedroom, but that's unrelated to our ordinances. Roger?
David, an individual who is homeless goes into a transition home, and he's there for twenty-four months. Now, he's exhausted that twenty-four months, he goes back to homelessness. Is there a time limit before he can come back?
Um, I'm not sure.
I think the success of the program would be founded on the fact that after twenty-four months of stable housing and support, they would move into their own housing. I'm sure that's not a hundred percent case scenario, but I think you'd find it exceedingly high.
That, that's the, that's the intent.
That's the intent, but I mean,
Right, right.
You have an individual that doesn't fall into that category.
Right.
Is there a timeframe that he has to, uh, come under before he can go back into transition?
That sounds...
It doesn't, that, that's, that's not stated anywhere in, in the language that we have so far.
That sounds program-specific, and not a, not a planning board matter.
Right, yeah, that's not...
And might vary by program and funding source.
Right, right. Okay, anybody else have any questions or comment? Amy?
Um, just a comment that, to me, fundamentally, the folks who need a homeless shelter are in a different place in their life than the folks that need transitional housing. And I don't think that they're at all the same, and they should not be regulated in the same way for all the reasons that the housing committee, um, referenced. Uh, we have transi- transitional housing all over Lewiston, and thank heaven for it. And it's things like a twenty-year-old who's getting a two-year, um, a two-year program from Commentise, they're getting a voucher, or from all these other programs. And you don't know where that transitional housing is. There's a ton of it. Like, we don't, we don't know, and I don't think we need to know. And I just fundamentally think it's not the same as a homeless shelter.
Okay, anybody else have, Christine, do you have any comments?
I mean, I would just agree with what Amy said. I don't personally want to keep transitional housing in this definition. Whether or not we separately choose to define tem- uh, transitional housing is a separate issue, but I don't think it makes sense to keep it in a homeless shelter definition, and also specifically because we currently have a shelter overlay. I don't, I mean, I, I've stated already that I don't agree with a shelter overlay in general, but I think it'd be exceedingly short-sighted to include transitional housing into a definition that would be affected by that overlay.
Okay. Alex?
The, the voucher situation that Amy brings up, I mean, when you look at this definition of transitional housing, it doesn't, like, there's some holes there, you know? Program participants have signed a lease with the entity that gave the va- well, they didn't sign a lease with the entity that gave the voucher. They sent the, signed the lease with the person who owns the building. So, does that even mean that's, you know, we might, as laypeople, call it transitional housing, but may not meet this definition? So like, you know, is this definition even apply to anything that's real? You know, is it sort of just a whatever? And thinking more about, you know, feedback from staff here about the fact that South Portland has only had this ordinance since earlier this year, I would just wonder from an application standpoint, you know? It is good practice to look at borrowing language from other communities when it's worked, but that's not a lot of time.
Right.
We're not, we're not borrowing from something that's, that's ironclad here.
Right, that, that has a track record that we can fall back on. Joshua?
I, I would just comment that, uh, one, we're trying to clean up, um, a lot of our code, and this seems overly onerous. It, I, I think we're trying, we all agree that we need more housing. And if we're limiting housing, um, no matter how, how we define it, we're creating complications for people to run businesses in our community. That's a challenge as well. And I, I guess, I, the direct question for, for anything between one and eight, uh, participants in a communal living facility, what is not in, in code right now that would create a problem for, for, um, complaints, for instance? Do you follow what I'm saying?
No.
Why would we have to create?
No, not at all.
Why would we have to create a definition for transitional housing in order to, to, to issue licensing for it as, as an extra layer of, of protection when we already have code that, that regulates the different, uh, residential neighborhoods? Ordinances, basically, excuse me?
Oh, to me, it sound, uh, so what you're, you're asking is, why are we having this additional requirement for an operator when they can already be adequately regulated under existing code, right?
Right.
It sounds like the chief difference here is that this will be inclu- this will mean that those operations will be included under the overlay district, and it will restrict the development of any new facilities. Also, based on David's comments earlier, it sounds like we don't keep track of these facilities right now, because we do not have a definition for them. So it's giving us the ability to track through licensure and restrict development of new facilities. Is that, uh, does that, does that sort of make sense with? In terms of, in terms of practical application of this?
Right, right, that, that's what I...
Given what Josh said, given what you said, I mean, I, I know we're...
You can't argue what the intent of the council is, but that's where we're, the direction we're going.
Right, right, okay. Uh, one more, and then we'll open it up to the public, and then we'll bring it back.
Okay, I just want to clarify, a lot of transitional housing doesn't happen in a transitional housing facility. It is a single, it is one apartment in a six-unit, or two apartments in a twelve-unit, or whatever. But it's, it's more casual than that. And so we're not talking about all these new facilities springing up. We're talking about limiting people to get in a, an apartment for a landlord that is, you know, gonna accept them, and their voucher, and all that other good stuff that comes along with it. And so, I, I don't want people to think we're talking about facilities, because that's really not what we're talking about.
Right, okay. So, this is a public hearing, so I am going to open it up to the public. Anyone who wishes to speak to this issue would like, we'd like you to go to the podium and state your name and your address, and you have three minutes to speak. So I'm opening it up to the public.
Hi, Scott Harriman, fifty-eight Shawmet Street. I'm also city councillor on the housing committee, and I was on the ad hoc shelter committee, which was primarily responsible for developing the homeless shelter ordinance. When we developed that, it was really designed for homeless shelters, like what you would think of as a shelter. We didn't consider any other kind of housing, including transitional housing, so many of the, uh, the provisions in there wouldn't really fit. Also, our current definition of homeless shelter kind of is contradictory to transitional housing. It says, quote, "A facility, the primary purpose of which is to provide temporary overnight accommodations to homeless persons who are guests free of monetary charge." So with transitional housing, typically, you're not a guest, you're a tenant, and you typically pay for it, too, or somebody does. As some of these things have been mentioned, the unintended consequences that this sort of change would result in, any new or expanded transitional housing would have to be within the overlay district, which is just a small portion of the downtown. It'd have to be two-hundred-and-fifty feet from schools and daycares, within a quarter-mile of public transportation. They'd have to get, uh, a license from the city council. They'd have to be open and have staff present twenty-four seven, which doesn't really fit with, uh, you know, one apartment in a building. They'd also have to be ADA accessible, which isn't necessarily feasible for a lot of, uh, a lot of existing buildings. I'm also concerned about the, what would apply immediately if this were passed. All transitional housing that currently exists would have to apply for a license from the city. We have a shelter cap, or a shelter bed cap of a hundred and twenty beds. And I don't know exactly how many shelter beds we have, but I think it's around eighty. So basically, the first, as, as I understand it, the first forty beds that apply would be licensed, and once we hit that cap, no one else could get a license, because it says, uh, you can't grant a license if we have a cap, or if we've hit the cap. A couple other things, uh, transitional housing operators would have to prohibit people from having pets, which are important to a lot of people. They'd also have to prevent people from, uh, possessing weapons, which, one, it isn't defined in the shelter ordinance. And also, with the different types of housing, it could bring up an issue with constitutional rights as far as Second Amendment rights. You know, where, where it might be justified to prohibit weapons in a congregate shelter, it might not be so justified in a, in an apartment that one person lives in. Another note on procedure, uh, creating policy specifically to interfere with one party's purchase of one property, specifically the Ramada Inn, just isn't good practice. We should be...
Yeah, good times, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak to, or this? In that case, I will close it to the public and bring it back to the board. I have not spoken, uh, yet, so I will give my two cents. I do not believe that transitional housing belongs in the, um, shelter ordinance. And I will not vote to, uh, advance this. Anyone else have any questions or comments before we move to a vote? Shannon?
I have a couple. I'd like to ask staff if they've considered or consulted with anyone in the city's general assistance program, of which vouchers are extended for the intention of temporary, at least one month and beyond, housing in which the tenant, provided with a GA voucher by the city, is required to sign an agreement with a private, almost always, landlord in the city of Lewiston. And that if we are mapping those residences, if we're looking the, at the amount of time that residents of this community who are eligible and receive GA vouchers might apply or be applicable to transitional housing, given the definition, which is not included in the definition that we're reviewing, but in the reason for proposed amendment background. And so this is the reference for transitional housing as a term defined in twenty-four CFR subsection five seventy-eight point three, in which we note specifically, where program participants, GA program, have signed a lease or occupancy agreement to move them into permanent housing within twenty-four months, and that this must be one month to a twenty-four month term. Have we looked at the impact to city administration expense licensing for our own purposes?
No.
Thank you. My second question is, is fundamentally, and I really appreciate what, um, Member Kittredge had, had offered, but specifically the contradictory notion of a homeless shelter being defined specifically as temporary, intended to serve as a refuge and a bridge between homelessness and residency in a fixed location. And then the term homeless shelter, including transitional housing, which we then say by definition is somebody who has a lease and agreement and is a resident. The two of those, um, don't match in, in sheer grammar and logistics, and they don't match. And so I struggle with the inclusion of that. I'd also like to point out where that really, um, where the rub is specifically for me, is that we took great care in the homeless shelter definition to note that homeless shelters that serve survivors of domestic violence, human trafficking, and sexual exploitation are exempt from this. And yet, the moment that a survivor is no longer homeless, but has a signed lease for one to twenty-four months, they are then excluded, because we have not taken that same care with the way in which we're including transitional housing definition into this existing language. And I don't believe that we have clarity from attorneys or consultants about the way in which we are identifying that class of people that we took care to exclude from homeless shelters, and how that's applied to people who have ideally been successful at receiving the support they needed in the homeless shelter, ala the definition that was carefully crafted, and are prepared to move into transitional housing on their pathway to complete self-sufficiency. And we will now have excluded them in the second phase. So I think there's a number of places where the exposure to the city, and the exposure to existing programs, and residents of our city of whom we've taken care to tend to, might be excluded in ways we were not intending with the adoption of this definition as presented today. And I'm unable to support it.
Okay, anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay, in that case, I would entertain a motion.
I'm happy to provide one. I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article Seven, Section Four, and Article Seventeen, Section Five of the Zoning and Land Use Code.
To send, yeah, do it.
To send a favorable recommendation to the city council for amendments to Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Two, Definitions, Section Two, definitions pertaining to transitional housing and recovery housing as presented.
Okay, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, and then that ca- further discussion? Okay, Josh?
Just, um, more consideration is that possible, there, there's still information that we, that we, I think we require as well. And so, is there a way to, um, make a friendly amendment to that?
No, no, no. We either send a favorable recommendation, or a, uh, or we vote it down. So if you have questions, or then vote it down, or if you're in favor of, of it, the way that it is written, you vote for it. Roger Dupree?
Can I just point out, you could continue it.
We can continue it, but I, yeah, I mean, if you guys want to continue it, Michael?
And, and we do have a joint workshop with the city council coming up, right?
Correct.
So, we could further discuss the details at that point.
All right, do...
As the one having made the motion, I'd prefer that tonight's comments be provided to city staff, city attorneys, and city council, and that we could absolutely take this up, issue up at our joint meeting or prior. But that that issue would be in light of the comments provided today, and would require some alterations, of which I don't feel we're positioned to offer amendments at this point to the definition being proposed at that time.
So, 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 uh, we need, so, do we need a motion?
There is currently a motion.
There is a co- current emotion. Do you want to re, uh, to take your motion back?
No.
Okay. So we need to vote on this, this motion, uh, and there is not, yes?
Or there could be a tabling or a continuance. What, what is the difference in the definitions of those two?
I believe, and jump in if I'm, I'm wrong, I think if you folks continue the matter, you're continuing, the discussion is gonna continue to a date certain. If you table something, tabling something, typically you can table something and it's tabled indefinitely. But you folks are charged by the ordinance ultimately to provide a recommendation to the council, and it actually speaks to if you don't provide a recommendation, and I have to look at...
I believe they can act on, if we don't provide a recommendation, they can act without the recommend, our recommendation.
Not only that, but your ability to act constitutes...
They also have to give a certain amount of time, maybe thirty or sixty days? I think we discussed ninety once, but it must have been...
I want to say the continuance was the one that had a timeframe associated with that.
No, it was, it was tabling, and tabling usually means it has to come back at the very next meeting.
I believe what we found was that we have to act upon a request from council in a certain amount of time, regardless of what we're doing. We could not put it on the agenda, we could table it, we could vote on it, we do, like, whatever. It has to be done within, I believe it was sixty days.
I think it's less than that.
Or, or thirty days.
I think it's less, I think it's within to their next meeting or something.
So, I, I would like to move the motion that's on the, on the floor.
Well, we've got to vote on the first motion.
We have to vote, we've asked them for some information, so let's get the information first. We asked what the criteria for continuance or tabling, so let's get that cleared up.
We have a couple sections of, uh, ordinance here for you. So the first is from the Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Seven, Planning Board, Section...
Shelley, we're dealing with the vibrating wall.
Oh, sorry.
Can you speak into the microphone a little more?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the first part of code is Article Seven, um, Planning Board, Section Three, Organization Rules E. Any request for a recommendation by the city, uh, council shall be acted upon within thirty days of the request, except as otherwise provided for by statute or ordinance, or unless a longer period is specified by the city council.
There's similar language in Article Fifteen that deals with the amendments. It also then goes on to say that the planning board shall make its report and recommendation on the proposal to the city council, not... on the proposal to the City Council not more than 15 days after the public hearing has been closed. Failure of the board to issue its report constitutes approval of the proposal. So I think if you folks continue it, the public hearing hasn't been closed yet, right? You would be able to continue that discussion to whatever. You continue it to a date certain, great that the public hearing is still going, and then within that 15 days, you folks would have to provide a recommendation, which historically you do the night of that public hearing anyway, so you would be fine at that point.
May I ask a follow-up procedural question?
Sure. Amy has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. After Amy. Go ahead.
No, I mean, my question is, is the phrase that we're voting on has two parts, that the term homeless shelter includes transitional housing but shall not include any certified recovery house.
Speak in your microphone, please. It's a two-part, right? The term homeless shelter includes transitional housing but shall not include any certified recovery house or program. That feels like two separate recommendations to me, that the one is, do we believe transitional housing should be included, and number two, do we believe that recovery housing should be excluded? I appreciate your nuance, but I actually disagree with what the... I think the recommendation that City Council has made, that we're making a motion and either voting for, and this is my procedural question, I'll get to in a moment, but is for this definition as presented. And so this definition is the homeless shelter to include this language around transitional and to with it exclude recovery. And I don't think that part of the recommendation that we're able to debate tonight from City Council is whether transitional housing is a definition we'd like to include in our Articles of Definitions, separate from the homeless shelter. That's not been presented or recommended from council. May I ask my procedural quick question? What is the nuanced difference between us taking action on this motion and voting down a favorable recommendation versus making a motion to send a unfavorable recommendation? Are we not acting by approving, by disproving the favorable recommendation?
Yeah.
And is our action that if there is a consensus or a majority of this board that feels that we cannot recommend this definition as presented?
So, yeah, no, so we... The policies and procedures you folks adopt reference Robert's Rules as like the guiding document. Robert's Rules recommendation is that motions are always made in the affirmative.
So it is... If we send a 06 vote against this motion as written in the favorable, then it is acting and sending our recommendation that this is not favored.
Correct.
And so if they receive a negative recommendation from you folks, then they need a supermajority vote to overturn a recommendation.
And just procedural, specifically, I think it's been touched on, but I want to say it explicitly for the audience and then also for my fellow members here, yeah, it's a wholesale thing. We're not looking on, you know, from a... If we were going to continue this, it's not like we can get more information and then modify the language. If we have concerns with the language as presented now, and it's not a situation where, you know, the language is fine, but we just don't know what it means, we have to strike down this and ask for new language.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
That's how it is. So with that context.
Okay.
Then why would... The action necessary...
Speak in your microphone, please.
Then why would the action necessary include as amended if relevant? I'm not suggesting that we have the ability to amend what we're looking at. City Council sends it to us, now we want to make some tweaks, now we have the right to do that before we send it back to them. That's what the as amended if relevant refers to in the motion.
I think that's standard language that probably should not have been included.
I think we're always capable of making amendments to the...
Yeah, no, Shelley and I were just saying that. I mean, I think you folks can make the recommendation as the motion is right now, but I don't think there's anything that keeps you folks from making another recommendation that says, whatever you want it to be. I mean, you can make another recommendation, and then the question will be for the council whether or not it's a substantive change or not, that kind of starts the process over again.
So we would have to make a recommendation for or against on this, and then we can make another recommendation saying, we'd like it to read this way, or something like that.
Right, right. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor.
Get a vote on it.
So we need to vote unless Shanna wants to take the motion, and she has said she does not. So we are... I'm going to call the vote. Roger Dupree?
No.
Joshua Nagin?
No.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
No.
Christine Kittredge?
No.
Amy Smith?
No.
Lucy Bisson?
No.
All right, so in this... From all of the discussion that we've been having, is there someone who wants to make a motion with some, a different language or whatever that you've been discussing? That's... Yes, Alex?
I'm unable to make the motion, but I would recommend that we get additional information about the language we are taking from South Portland in terms of efficacy and applicability in the real world, since we are borrowing the language. I think it sounds like we have some concerns around what it means to be in a transitional program in regards to vouchers and the relation of who holds the lease. I think those, we need some clarity on, maybe from a legal perspective. Looking at the memo from the Housing Committee, there were questions raised about ADA accessibility and other requirements for the facility in terms of, you know, if we call it a homeless shelter and a transitional housing facility are the same thing, or transitional housing units are the same thing, and they have to apply to the same rules, are we going to run afoul with some existing units or anything like that? And I'd like to just see more clarity on that before we even talk about providing new text or an amended text, because I think we just need to be informed if we're making this big of a change, this substantive of a change, to an already fairly complex piece of ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Josh?
One of the things that stood out, it sounds like in single-family, in NCA neighborhoods, it's basically four, or single-family homes, it's basically four people who could live in a congregate setting. Do I have that correct?
No, up to eight, isn't it? Is that what you're saying?
But it's on the...
Can you ask your question again, Josh?
Yeah, so right now, my position is that I wouldn't want to regulate under eight, stick by the main state law, but it sounds like NCA neighborhoods, or anywhere where there's a single-family home, there is the family, which could be one person, right, and three additional people?
Right.
Which then creates a gap between, in my mind, of the five to eight, which is just something that I was thinking about. But it's also built in to basically say, in any residential neighborhood where you have a single-family home, the max that you would have in communal living facilities is four unless some people were related. Am I correct on that? I know that's complex the way I asked it.
I guess I want to clarify what a congregate care and assisted living facility, like the congregate living arrangement...
Well, just communal in general, because we're talking about transitional housing, which we don't have additional definition for.
Right, and so it isn't necessarily that it's, would fit under our communal, our congregate care facility.
Well, that's the point. It doesn't fit in any of our definitions, and that's why we need to define it.
So I don't think that the number limits you're talking about apply, other than our maximum number of people who can live in a dwelling unit, which is the family plus three.
Yeah. Just, just so, I think I know what you're getting at. You're concerned about why we have a gap that cannot be filled under current law between facilities that are licensed and regulated as congregate care facilities and just like a house that has four unrelated people in it, and you're maybe wondering about what we could do about that number?
Well, what I'm thinking is already single-family homes, regardless of the arrangement, it's capped at four people, as long as they're not related.
No, it's not capped at four people. I mean, if it's family, it's a family. I mean, it can be...
As long as they're not related, that was his... That was...
Yeah, but generally, you're going to have people that are related, not necessarily just... I don't think this is, this is part of the discussion that we're having right now. Shanna?
I look forward to the joint meeting on September 12th where we discuss, and to your point, Josh, you're focusing really on single-family homes, which is part of, but also impacting multifamily, some of these same conversations, which I, as we've noticed already with the language that's been provided to us so far, there are legal definitions and federal definitions and program definitions. My experience, they don't always align, they don't always build off each other, but I think congregate care, group home, recovery house, transitional home, I think there is a variety of those. I'm concerned that we were modeling after an ordinance in South Portland that did not include transitional housing. Fundamentally, this whole conversation is about the inclusion of transitional housing into our homeless definition, into our homeless shelter overlay, and we are modeling the language that we're reviewing tonight over a definition that has not included transitional If we were, and I don't know that a vote is required to send requests back both to staff and recommendations for City Council to consider, but I would consider looking at alternative definitions where transitional housing is included, and that relates to the ordinances and licensing requirements that the council is considering, and ideally in a place where it has been in effect for more than a year, and that we can speak to the staff, as well as the owner-operators, about the impacts of those definitions to them.
Yes, Alex?
Just to echo that, that, yeah, I think it's very important that if we're going to model our code on someone else's code, that that code that we're modeling it on is effective and proven. I know that's a really hard thing to meet, you know, it's kind of subjective, but I think certainly being around longer than a year is a really important part of that.
And theirs has only been around for a few months, so...
Six months.
Six months, so I, you know... So I think that what, you know, I would like us, you two, as you transfer this unfavorable recommendation to the City Council, that you would explain to them why we're concerned, and all of our concerns, and that we would love to, I know it's on the agenda for our joint meeting on the 12th, and that we would definitely want to discuss alternatives and to find perhaps ordinances that, as Alex has mentioned, that have been in effect more than six months and that have some record to them. I mean, yeah, so I think that is what we want to do, is to ask them to look at other alternatives. Amy? Last comment.
Okay. Does it make any sense to offer an amendment to this that simply, and I don't know if that's the right...
No, it's not an amendment.
That we just strike includes transitional housing?
No, I think we've already voted, so it's voted.
Additionally, that is the language that's on the record now.
You do want to do an additional motion?
Oh, I see. So the definition presented today with the underlined additions referencing transitional housing, when you remove those underlined additions referencing transitional housing, it is the current housing definition?
It is the current ordinance.
So if you remove those pieces, you'd be proposing that we reaffirm what's already our definition?
Okay. Just want to make sure it's clear that what we're objecting to is the transitional housing piece of it.
Correct. Correct. Okay. Other business. A planning board recommendation to the City Council on the acquisition of 237 Central Avenue Rear. Shelley?
Okay. So the request here is been made by the property owner who would like to donate this or give this property to the city in lieu of some taxes that have not been paid. The last page of your packet does show the tax accounting for the last 10 years, and the property itself is about a two-thirds of an acre in size. It's located in the Neighborhood Conservation A District. It is a long, skinny rectangular piece that abuts residential lots on all four sides and is really landlocked and doesn't have frontage and doesn't have the ability to be developed except in concert with any of the adjoining parcels. I think that's pretty much it, that we have information about the taxes here and the values, but...
Okay. I have a question on the, your little chart here. It says TL-R, RE-R. RE probably is real estate. What's TL?
The Too Long Didn't Read is, I think, the abbreviation that you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a little bit of internet speak here. So basically, that's, in summary...
Oh.
No, no, it's the second column under category.
No, no, it's a specific designation on here.
That's great. I was hoping you knew the answer, because I certainly don't. It's, unless David knows the code in our assessing system, what that is.
No, I don't know.
Okay.
I think that's a great thought.
Well, it's the most, it's the biggest amount. So I'm just curious. I mean, I don't care, it's not that big a deal, but yeah. Any questions or comments from people? Yes, Joshua?
I just have a quick question as far as, so there's a proposal, obviously, for the city to take it over for back taxes, but currently it's undevelopable, so has anyone contacted any of the butters to find out if they had any interest in one?
Yeah, but that's not our, it's not ours yet. Until we take it, then we can do that.
Understood, but I'm just wondering if there's any... Okay, let me rephrase it. Is there any plan on having any conversation with any of the butters about possibly taking over this property or a portion of this property? And also, how wide is it, just overall?
I can certainly answer the how wide is it question in just a moment when I get up to the map. Historically, I believe that that often happens when the city takes over a property, is there's often discussion with the butters, they would need to come back to you for a disposition of property when that would happen. I don't know, has there been discussions about this specifically? Do you know of any discussions?
It's in the 60 to 80 feet.
The city policy, they either direct negotiations with the butters, list it with the broker, or do an RFP. So those will be the three options that'll be considered.
Right, and the only real viable option is talking to the neighbors, because who the heck is going to buy a piece of land that's, that you can't do anything with? You know, I mean, it's...
Alex, I'm guessing, and we can check, but I'm guessing TL might be tax lien?
Yeah, there is.
The other one is real estate, and the other one's taxes.
Oh, that's probably what it is, yeah, TL. Okay.
Too Long Didn't Read, I really appreciate that.
By what? Two, three, probably like 600 feet, 700 feet?
600 feet.
Yeah, so 600 feet, and it's not even, it's not square, I mean rectangular, because this one's 46 feet, and the other's, the other one's 50, almost 51, so... Yes, Alex?
Is there, just because we've had a couple of these come up, is there any process to convey this to the abutting owners, where it doesn't have to pass through the city and, you know, cost us some procedural money to take care of this?
Well, it can if the people, if the don't, who, the people who want to give it approach their neighbors and say, do you want this piece of property? Because it happened to my sister a few years back, there was a lot behind her property, and the owner, because it was a landlocked piece of land, I guess looked at the tax rolls and sent her a letter and said, you want it? I'm going to give it to you. So he signed it over to her and gave it to her.
Wouldn't they have to pay the unpaid taxes?
No, well, they had, he had paid his taxes.
Correct, but in this situation...
Yeah, in this case, they would have to bring up the tax, they'd have to pay the unpaid taxes. Correct?
No.
If they were going to transfer it to, let's say it belongs to me, and I'm going to give it to Christine, so does one of us have to pay the taxes before it... So either I pay the taxes or she pays the taxes after it's been transferred to her?
Somebody's paying the taxes.
Somebody's paying the taxes.
It's like when you buy a property, somebody is responsible for paying whatever taxes up to that point, or...
Okay.
Yeah, but in this case here, he's gifting the property to the city...
Right.
...in lieu of taxes, so the taxes are not. So whatever happens after that point, nobody pays taxes.
Right, right.
Right, I was saying that to Alex's question, if like this property owner had tried to offer it to a neighbor instead of the city.
Yeah, somebody would have to pay the taxes, whether it's Mr. Baril or the neighbor that he finds that wants it.
Technically, that's not accurate, for what it's worth, unless, unless somebody was financing...
Unless, unless somebody was financing the sale of that, there would be no requirement to clear the lien to transfer the property.
Oh, true.
It just means the city would go after the new person.
Right, okay.
And yes, they both should be responsible for, in that scenario.
Right, right. Okay, all right, any other, Michael?
Well, I was gonna ask if the city is in effect paying $369 for the parcel, what value does it have to the city, especially if we're not looking to sell to a butters?
I don't know that we are looking to sell to a butters.
I don't know if staff has an answer to that question.
Shanna?
Another consideration is, and thank you for looking at that one lot, but the, unless, and I don't see it anywhere in our materials, that there is some easement that allows access to that property. Once the city assumes that property, we'll be required, as we do of all residents, to ensure the maintenance of that property to a certain height that we cannot access to then comply with. And so, we'll be out of compliance ourselves to grass height weeds and the amount of money that our crews would spend going to that property, accessing that property, the gas to mow that property and to maintain that property regularly to be in compliance with our own maintenance ordinances would far outweigh the taxes on an annual basis.
Sure, Josh?
I'm just curious as to, when you acquire, when, when the city acquires properties, what do we pay to, to verify that the property is clear of any clouds or encumbrances, or do we do due diligence at all on the properties?
Title, sorry?
We don't. That's the trick. Whenever we look to sell a property, unless it is for a warranty deed, we don't. There, there are quitclaim deeds, which is a challenge then, because for finance purposes, you won't get people to finance necessarily a quitclaim deed. So, there are been, have been situations where we've sold properties with the condition of a clean title, and it's taken a couple of years and several thousand dollars for it to happen. At the same time, we've found people that are just more than willing to buy it as well, because they're okay with that, they just want to have a bigger backyard or something like that, so...
My, my, my take on this is that I would encourage the owner to find one of the adjacent properties.
All right, well, we need to make a motion and vote it up or down. So, I'll entertain, any further discussion?
It'd be helpful to, to frame a motion around what others think about what Josh has just offered, because that too would be my recommendation to council, is that instead of accepting this gift, which feels nice...
Well, I think we need to either, to amend...
It says a planning recommendation on the acquisition.
Right, so, then we can make a motion with those stipulations in the motion.
I look forward to hearing from someone once they have a motion that feels affirmed enough to the board's direction, when we've only heard from one or two board members about how they feel.
Okay, how does everybody else feel?
Or does anyone else want to make a motion?
Does anybody else?
I have a question.
Sure, Michael.
Does the current owner have access to it? Is he a, he's abutting property?
Yeah, do we, do we know if Mr. Baril is one of the butters?
Paul Baril.
Let's see, where is this, his, oh, his, he uses his business address.
Shelley can check, but I think this is the heirs of, isn't it?
Huh?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, it was from the trust.
So, they may have sold a property and not sold that one, you think?
Probably.
Maybe it is...
What about on the, the northern end, the lot up there lines up with it too?
I feel like I went through this exercise and I didn't find, I don't know for sure
Almost there, Shelley.
Yeah.
So, none of the current butters?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
So, yes, Amy, so...
So, absolutely. Based on Shanna's comments, I would say that if the city is gonna have to spend money to maintain that over time, that it's not a good deal for the city.
Okay. All right, I'll still entertain a motion...
Which will be framed in the affirmative, so the group can vote it down, as I understand it.
Correct.
I'd like...
Or, or you can, including if any specific conditions raised by the planning board.
Thank you. No, it's okay.
Yes, absolutely, so please do.
I'd love to make a motion pursuant to Article 7, Section 4H of the Zoning and Land Use Code, to send a...
Favorable?
Favorable recommendation of the city council for the acquisition of 237 Central Rear with the following conditions that have been raised by the planning board. That staff and council affirm that no maintenance, upkeep, or expense to the lot will be incurred by the receipt of this property. That access shall be granted through an easement to an abutting property. And that council and staff have exhausted the opportunity to work with the original trust to negotiate agreements with abutting landowners prior to the acquisition in lieu
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
No.
Joshua Nagin?
Yes, under the conditions, yes.
Michael Marcock?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. Okay, next is the reading of the minutes. So, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the July 10th and August 14th draft minutes unless someone wishes to separate them. I have sent a, I sent, I read them, I made some corrections, and I sent everyone a copy of the corrected minutes. So, what we're voting on is the corrected minutes. If you didn't read them, you got a copy.
I'll make a motion to adopt the July 10th, 2023, and July 14th, 2022 draft men, minutes as amended.
I second.
All right, yes, Michael?
Okay, I have no objection to approving them both at the same time. I, I just want to address the, the one small paragraph in the August 14th that I referenced, where it says, "Michael Marcock would like to know if they could remove the 'needa biscuit' sign." Sort of has a connotation that is different than what I remember. And my, my verbiage would be, if I can read my own handwriting, "Michael Marcock would like to know if the 'unida' spelling, biscuit sign is affected by the amendment."
How is it spelled? Because I wasn't sure.
It's U-N-E-E-D-A, I believe. You need a biscuit.
You need a biscuit.
Ah.
They merged three words to me.
Correct, correct, okay.
Thank you.
So, in that case, Roger Dupree?
Uh, wait, procedurally, would Christine accept the friendly amendment?
Yes, I accept the friendly amendment with those changes.
Okay, Josh, do you, who, who seconded?
I seconded.
Okay, do you accept it?
Yep.
Okay, Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nagin?
Yes.
Michael Marcock?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn unless there is some other, other business.
Okay, we had a couple of questions for the board about meeting dates, so we just wanted to remind everybody that we do have a joint meeting with the council on the...
12.
5:30 at, on September 12th. And then, we also had a question, it doesn't look like we have agenda items for September 11th.
Oh, no.
We did have a request from Lewiston Housing Authority to have you review the Martell School project on September 18th.
So, instead of having a meeting on the 11th, we'd have it on the 18th and then have another one maybe on the 25th?
And, and we may not have agenda items for the 25th yet if I don't get another application this week.
Okay.
So, so that was kind of the request, they have a grant that's due on the 21st that they would like to have planning board action before if possible, but they weren't able to get their application together in time for the 11th.
Okay, does anyone have any objection to switching from the 11th to the 18th?
I, I won't be here, but no objection.
Okay.
I can accommodate.
Okay, so, anyone else? Everyone's okay? All right, so then let's make it the 18th instead of the 11th.
Okay, then I had a second scheduling question. In talking with administration, we believe that it might be necessary to have a second joint meeting with the city council based on the amount of topics.
Yeah.
So, we were curious about September 26th as a possibility for folks.
I'm fine, and you, what about everybody else? Check your calendars, 26th of September, you're all set?
What is that time when we do a joint? Is it 6 o'clock?
5:30, sometimes it's 6, but it's, on the 12th, it's 5:30.
Is that 5:30 on the 12th? I don't know on the 26th, it would either be 5:30 or 6:00.
My schedule could accommodate 6:00 more easily than 5:30, though I'm happy to do what I can.
We haven't, we haven't asked the council yet, this is all literally this afternoon.
Okay, so, in a, in that case, tell them we want 6 o'clock. Please. All right, so put it on your calendars tentatively?
We can send you guys an email too, just as a reminder.
Right, yeah, but...
We'll let you know when things are confirmed.
Confirmed, but, you know, if, that way you can block it off on your calendar so you don't schedule something else. Okay, anything else? Are we all set? Motion to adjourn?
Sub moved.
Everybody?
Hi.
Just looking at Linda, who was looking for a second.
Christine.
Okay, yeah, she can just throw some, some name in there, doesn't matter.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
All right, see you, see you on the 12th.
See you on the 12th, yep.
And not the 11th.
There any chance that the 11th might be a, just kidding, we're back on again, because we did...